Public meeting in order. This is the special session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona to be held on Monday, June 17, 2019 at 5:30 PM at the city hall, building 915 South Toverville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Joni Giacchino. Here. Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. We do not have call to the public on the agenda, however, we have a couple people that have asked to speak, and so I will allow that and start with Tamara Birch. Ms. Birch, welcome.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor, and city council people, city manager, and all the beautiful community members, and our two applicants. Thank you for being here. I'm proud to be part of this city. I live in Ward III, 215 Hurst Street Road. Basically, my comments have to do with the item number one, and it has to do with our applicants for the city manager. Two-part question, what attracted you to Bisbee, and how do you feel you fit into our beautiful community that, particularly the arts, this work in education, and my heart drops? Also, if they, I don't know if they have time to answer, or can they answer, I'm just an interested party here. And then Heather Rooter, city manager, feeding her application, she worked for five months as a city manager in Clifton, and I'm just wondering why she has left that position.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Donna Fuller.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm pulling, and I just wanted to call to your attention that the resumes of the two applicants are not attached to either the agenda or the amended agenda, nor are they in the packet that is at the rear of the room for this meeting. So, that was just a comment that I wanted to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Coronado, the agendas were, I'm sorry, the resumes were posted yesterday at four thirty?
Correct, online.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item of business is item number one, which is actually discussing the position with the candidates, and as I understand, we drew straws, or flip coins, or made bilateral decisions.
Yes, look over that.
And I understand that Ms. Teresa Coleman is in the up first.
Yes.
And so we will have our personnel director accompany Heather Ruder to places elsewhere.
Is it good?
Yeah.
I can't hear my tone, but...
Yeah, just, you may want to pull it a little closer to speak into it. All right. First of all, Ms. Coleman, I'd like to thank you very much for being here, and for the opportunity of us being able to ask you more questions in public. You've gone through a long day today.
Woo!
You've gone through multiple panels of individuals, both staff, as well as members of the council, and community members. And I want to thank you for doing that, and for consenting to join us from the great state of Minnesota. So with that, we're going to each ask you a question, and I would be happy to start with Ms. Giacchino.
Do we do it in order, or do we choose?
Oh!
Typically, we do it in order.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay, then I'll start with question one. How does one obtain and maintain public trust?
I maintain public trust, and actually earn the public trust by being available and accessible, providing information when it's requested.
I guess we move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Social media, such as Facebook and Twitter, are increasingly significant means of communication with the public. How do public officials use this process effectively without violating the open meeting law?
By not formulating an agreement outside of a public meeting.
Anything else you'd like to add?
To me, that's the test of whether or not there's been a violation, as to whether or not there was an intent to formulate an agreement outside of a meeting.
How do you stand on the idea of privatization, and contracting out for public services?
There are certainly circumstances in which finding out what the advantages or disadvantages of contracting might be. I have contracted for employees with manpower to find out if we had a good fit before making a permanent hire. That's worked really well. The city of Tassin contracts for engineering services. That's worked really well for us. We've contracted for our EDA coordinator. He brings a whole organization with him, so we get more than just one person's expertise. We get the expertise of a very large organization when it comes to economic development. So there are times when it can be to the councils a advantage to do that.
Thank you.
What is your definition of a balanced budget?
Ideally, the budget is balanced when we're able to add to our stabilization fund at the end of the year. So that's to say that not everything that was budgeted was spent, and we come away with a little cushion in the end.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
For the clarification for anybody, when you speak of stabilization fund, you're talking about a reserve...
A reserve account, correct. Thank you.
Have you professionally supported a policy or decision from your mayor and council that you disagree with?
I did disagree with the decision to deny a rezon and conditional use permit. Following the meeting, I informed the applicant that their appeal of the planning commission decision had been denied, and provided them with that information in writing.
So the policy or the decision had already come from the mayor and council?
The planning commission had made a recommendation to deny the rezon and conditional use permit. The folks who had applied for those appealed the planning commission's decision to the city council.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I felt that there were perhaps underlying reasons the council was basing their decision upon that weren't necessarily tied to zoning decision, but the council did deny the appeal, and I did inform the applicant that their request was denied.
Please provide an example of a creative community development plan that you have initiated and or participated in, including outcome.
When I worked for the city of Lewiston, they had a bowling alley that had gone out of business. The EDA had made a loan on equipment in the facility. The bank that was foreclosing on the property asked me to come take a look at the equipment and find out if the city was interested in retaining their interest in the equipment. When I met the banker there, he just offhand said, "Well, I would sell this to the city for 90% of the value of the nose," and we left it at that. But as I thought about it overnight, it seemed pretty brilliant that the city could get control of a vacant property that had problems with the roof. So the city did purchase the property for $90,000. $26,000 of that came back to the city as unpaid taxes. Another approximately $2,500 came back to the city as unpaid utilities, and the city did sell that building to Dollar General, and the city that did not have a grocery store or a convenience store ended up with a very nice facility for their letdown.
Excuse me, but I don't have the questions on the back.
There are.
There are ten.
Well, I've got one here that does, so... So that's the one I don't... Okay, got it.
No, it's the same. Oh, your idols. No, it's the same one.
Are we good at this?
Yes. I've got the right one. I just need to get rid of one of them.
Is there anything you want to take three minutes and let us know why you want this position?
Yes. Can I acknowledge those questions?
Please.
Is that okay?
Of course.
Yes. And would you rephrase that?
Okay, so basically, that you attract you to our community, particularly our community in the United States. And then also, maybe why you left your last job, or why you...
Looking to make a change now. Okay, excellent. Bisbee is a larger picture of the town that I currently live in. I live in Lanesboro, Minnesota. It is a tourist town. We have guests that join us every weekend to take advantage of bike trails and the River Trail for canoeing, kayaking, tubing, biking, and we also have a theater and an art gallery. So those are things that attract me to Bisbee. It's very much like a home that I enjoy right now. I like the walkability. I understand the neighborhoods are kind of hard for each other, but I like the walkability. If you live in a neighborhood, you can get to a coffee shop, you can get to a park, you can take advantage of the amenities in your neighborhood. So I do appreciate that. And I have not left my current position. I am currently the city administrator for the city of Tassin, Minnesota.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the log day that you put in.
Yes, well, some of you have been just as... Joni took us for breakfast, so she's been here with us. You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Walker out, and you go. All right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
A real pleasure.
Joel.
Okay, great.
I didn't realize, and then I got it, and I was just... I'm like, you stupid idiot.
Yeah, that's... Yeah, well, we have to pull it, flip that mic around if you don't mind.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. There you go. Okay, let me catch up here in just a second, please. Okay, I wanted to thank you very much for the log day that you put in.
You're welcome.
For coming all the way from Tucson.
It's such a journey.
And what is going to happen is, we're each going to ask you a question, and then I'm going to give you three minutes to wrap it up, and tell us why you want this position. I do, because it has come up several times, I do, before we start, want to give you a quick opportunity to discuss your leaving Clifton, Arizona, after five months, so if you would like to adjust that.
Okay. Great question. I just first want to say, Clifton was an amazing community, and I was truly humbled by being able to work there. It had nothing to do with merit help tool. It had nothing to do with my staff. Everyone was extremely supportive. 99% of the people there, amazing. It had to do with personal safety, and that's all I'm going to say on that.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we're going to start at the other side, and maybe you'll get the question you want, Ms. Klein, if you'd like. Take your first question.
Hi, again. Hello. How does one obtain and maintain the public trust?
First of all, you need to be transparent, honest and open communication. If you make a commitment, you need to follow through with that commitment, and you need to make sure that you're keeping the public goal in mind. There can't ever be an illusion, just even the slightest illusion, that you're not being open and transparent to the public, because that will diminish your trust with the community faster than anything else.
Ms. Hanson.
Social media, such as Facebook and Twitter, are increasingly significant means of communication with the public. How do public officials use this process effectively without violating open meeting law?
There's a fine line there. So putting out notifications as far as, you know, we're going to have streets closed, or we're going to be doing construction in this area, or praising our staff for things that they've done in the community, or praising a community member for things they've done in the community. Putting out information that should be brought up in council meetings during an open meeting law, we need to really screen and make sure, and before anything is posted, you're reviewing that carefully. If you have any questions, we need to speak with our attorney. The last thing we want to do is put anyone in harm's way, nor expose any information that shouldn't be out there, because as soon as you put it out on the internet, it's there for everybody to see. So we really need to be cautious on how we use that.
How do you stand on the idea of privatization and contracting out for public services?
That's a great question. Obviously, I would love to keep all the services internally. Unfortunately, not all communities have the skills and the knowledge to do that. You may be going through transition, people may leave, that have licenses to operate based on recruitment plans, operate collection systems. We may not have an internal person that knows the IT system. And with the HIPAA laws, we really need to be cautious with that. So there are certain services that we absolutely need to contract out if we can't fill those positions internally with the right credentials. I don't think it's in the best interest of the community for the other positions, because if you work here, you live here, and you take pride in your community, and so you're going to give more than if you brought in someone from the Valley or someone from Tucson, and you're going to understand the dynamic in a greater light, because you live it every day. But there are certain instances where you become in a jam, and you need to seek professional services, and you need to bring that in for the betterment of the community. If you fall out of compliance, there's an issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Heather, what's your definition of a balanced budget?
My definition of a balanced budget is not incorporated into the general fund reserves. Those reserves are set aside and should be growing every year for emergency purposes. If something happened downtown, and now we have to spend $500,000 to $1 million to fix a collection system, where are we going to pull that money from? It has to come from the reserves. I don't believe in using the reserves for recurring expenses, one-time fund expenses, emergency expenses, and then reporting money back into the reserves every year. That shouldn't be dwindling on a yearly basis. It should be either staying the same, or hopefully increasing the reserves as you move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. How have you professionally supported a policy or decision from your mayor or council that you disagree with?
My personal opinion doesn't matter. This wasn't in the best interest of the city. So I'm going to provide you with the correct information. I'm going to allow you to make your own determination. I will make a recommendation. It's not based on personal bias. It's going to be based on what I view is best for the community, and it may not reflect the same as your view. That's why you are elected officials, to make that final determination. But I will provide you with all the information on both sides of this.
Ms. Giacchino.
Please provide an example of a creative community development plan that you have initiated and or participated in, including outcome.
When I was in Iowa, we had a middle school, and they were building a new middle school. And this middle school's structure was historic. Everyone that lived in this community went to this middle school, and this middle school was the only place where they had a stage. The new middle school was not going to have a stage. So what we did is, we worked with the school district, and our city hall was dwindling, and we needed to get out of there. So we repurposed the middle school for, not only for public services, so we could combine all of our departments, but also, we were able to put in a gallery for art upstairs, a banquet area to be rented out, and able to keep the stage, so that way the community could still have access to plays, concerts of children, and things that...
Thank you. Would you like to take a couple minutes and tell us, I believe, Ms. Birch had asked a couple questions, and you're welcome to answer those, or if you choose not to, just tell us why you want this position.
I believe I'm a great fit for this position. I love small communities. It's where you can make the biggest impact with the smallest changes. With my background in civil engineering, I understand the challenges of the infrastructure, and thank goodness you have a qualified public works director now, because that makes all the difference. Also, you know, being in a small community, you learn to come together in times of need, right? You're there for your neighbor, and can check on each other, and you may not always agree, what I find interesting about Bisbee is the different wards, the different areas, let's, how do we connect that? You know, I appreciate the distinctness of Old Bisbee, Warren, and San Jose. However, let's connect them. You know, let's connect them via bike paths, via walking trails, you know, let's bring people together. I want to live, if I want to live in San Jose, I want a bike to Old Bisbee, and go to the restaurant, and go eat, or go see an art gallery. I mean, we need to have that connectivity, and not only brings the community together, but it allows for the residents here to actually enjoy the community on a higher level than they already are. So that's, that's all I have. Although, all I want to say is, thank you very much for everybody who participated, for your time. I know it's been a long day for all of you, as well as for myself, and you take time out of your business days, and it's greatly appreciated.
And again, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number two, discussion of possible approval of a motion to go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38... I move to go with... 41... Point oh three. Point oh three. One, for consideration of the appointment and appointment of a city manager. Now, sir. I move that we go into executive session.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Those in favor of executive session signify by standing aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Ms. Fuller, did you not get your...
I signed up for number two, so...
Okay, I thought you took care of it all at once. Please?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Your reason for going into executive session, you cited Arizona's revised statute 38-431.031. That statute reads, "Discussion or consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee." It goes on to say that, with the exception of any public body, except that, with the exception of salary discussions, an officer, appointee, or employee may demand that discussion or consideration occur at a public meeting. The public body shall provide the officer, appointee, or employee with written notice of the executive session, as is appropriate, but not less than 24 hours for the officer, appointee, or employee to determine whether discussion or consideration should occur at a public meeting. My concern is that this person that you are going into executive session about is not an officer, appointee, or employee, and therefore doesn't qualify under the executive session statute. Thank you.
Do you have anything to address that? Well, Ms.... Surely, sure. Yeah, the Attorney General has provided both its manual and, I think, an informal opinion from years ago, that interviews of executive employees can be held in there. Thank you, sir. So we stand in executive session. We will be leaving. You may return upstairs.
Second?
I will indicate, and I'll refer everybody, this is operator chair. Okay.
You a driver's license?
Yeah, I do. Maybe you have pilot's license, so we have... All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Come out of executive session. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Item number three, discussion of possible selection of a preferred applicant for the position of city manager. Discussion is open, council. Do we have a motion?
I move that we select Heather Ruder as our preferred applicant for the position of city manager, subject to the finalization of negotiations for the contract for that position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion, and we have a second? Ms. Coronado.
Clarify, please.
They're making a motion to begin contract negotiation.
Yes, yes.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. We, Mr. Higgins? We, Mr. Higgins? I move that we adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second, too, chair. Those in favor of adjournments, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
I apologize for the subvention, I got a little late. I was expecting, it's like I was choosing...